All right. So I'm going to call the meeting to order at six ten. Um, does anybody here want to do a tour of Neshabie that hasn't been before? And it's okay to say yes to do. Okay, well, then I'm going to skip that since. Okay, all right, so can I get have someone to make a motion to accept the agenda, please?
Move this, set the agenda.
Thanks, Derek. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Becky. All of those that approve the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Brett, I need to see your hand or smiley face or something. Yeah, Becky, I see you. It's Brett. I need to. Uh, everyone else said yes. Okay. Okay, perfect. All right, so we have an agenda. Communications with parent citizens and staff. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board? Okay, and I haven't seen any communications, let's talks or anything like that. Okay. Moving on, uh, let's talk about the equity audit.
Let me, uh, share my screen here.
Um, if you guys want to come around so that you can see this, that would be fine. Or move to next to Charlene if you like.
Oh, come on. Let me. There we go, I think, maybe. Perfect, there we go. Okay. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Tyler Weideman. I'm the curriculum director for the SU. So I'm going to take you through, and Suzanne's getting, excuse me, Suzanne and I are going to take you through the, uh, what we've been doing with our equity audit that took place last, uh, last spring. And, uh, we have some questions if you want towards the end, but basically, before I get into the nuts and bolts of everything, I want to talk to you about the audit itself. So from the audit, it was a very long document. It's about two hundred and eighty pages that we received. Uh, and what I'm going to give to you tonight is the key findings and then the recommendations of those findings. Now, the findings here, there's three of them. I don't think that, um, you'd be too surprised by these. Uh, I think we kind of know what our issues are that we need to resolve and work through. And then once we get to the recommendations, uh, just so you know, the coaching team, the CIA, so the Curriculum Instruction Assessment Coaching Team is working through a equity action plan. And the key findings, excuse me, the recommendations are definitely influencing that plan. But I'll get to those in a minute. So first finding here is, um, key finding one. Based on the analysis of district discipline and achievement data, there appears to be a disproportionate, on the basis of race, socioeconomic status as measured by free, reduced meal status farms, and economically disadvantaged students EDS and students with disability status. So that's the first finding. Second finding here is both the climate survey and the focus groups revealed an unsafe climate for minoritized youth in middle and high school, specifically for LGBTQIA+ students. Then the third finding here is focus groups provide evidence of implicit bias, a lack of cultural understanding, and discomfort across the district when dealing with differences based on social identity. So what we're going to move into next is the recommendations. I don't know why that just happened. What is that?
I'm just making sure that.
Oh, okay. That is you. Okay. I don't want to touch my computer. Uh, so again, the recommendations that came from this, there are six different recommendations that came from the audit. Now, those recommendations right now are definitely influencing our work. We're not going explicitly with all of those, but they are definitely influencing our work. So recommendations. Uh, first one here is create a district-wide equity task force committed to examining equity and climate issues. Appoint an equity officer at each school responsible for promoting equity and diversity throughout the school. Develop a district equity and diversity strategic plan. Number four here, offer in-depth and ongoing professional development opportunities for teachers, administrators, students, and the district-wide equity task force. Five, conduct periodic community forums with parents and other stakeholders. Lastly, recruit and develop a team responsible for data oversight for the district. Now again, these are the recommendations of the plan. I want to get into basically where we are right now and the work we've been doing thus far. And if I'm going too fast, please stop me. I know I may be going a little fast, but I talk quickly sometimes. So there's really three phases to this, where we're, where we are right now. So the equity action planning progress, um, the review process took place once we got the report back in June. Planning process is where we are right now of what we're going to do with that information. And then we're going to act upon it. What, where are the action plans coming from it? So the review phase, so like I said, mid-June, central office administrators receive the audit. In summer of twenty twenty-two, so we, uh, basically came together with our building principals, central office, and reviewed the audit. Uh, then the audit became a, basically, every, twice a month, we have an admin council meeting. So that's central office administrators and all of our building principals and assistant principals. The equity audit is a rolling agenda item for every single one of our meetings. There's always something we were talking about. There's always something we're working on towards for that audit. And then basically in fall of twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, those key findings that we just went over a couple of minutes ago were shared with all of our staff. So planning phase here. So, uh, just recently, in October, our building administrators developed equity action steps with their staff, basically through faculty, uh, meetings, what have you, PLCs, and decided upon some, uh, steps for their building specific to that report that would be good for their building to start working through. Uh, the equity action plan was just drafted, and I will say drafted is the key word, is in draft form right now. Uh, the coaching team through the Curriculum Instruction Assessments group, myself included, um, worked through six different goals in the equity action plan influenced by the recommendations of the equity audit to come up with a plan. Our admin, building admin have seen that plan. Uh, they have provided feedback. We've done another round with them and another admin council meeting just last week where we looked at what's not in the plan. And essentially, that plan's going to be, uh, shared with our, uh, staff, school board yourself, and community throughout winter twenty twenty-three. So we're still working on that part. So here comes the act phase. What are we doing? So basically, in spring and summer of twenty twenty-three, we're going to begin implementing those goals, those strategic, um, action plans or expected results of that action plan. And then throughout that is a continued analysis and refinement of the action plan. Now, what I need to, uh, really stress with you is this is not a document that, once we're done, we're wiping our hands wet and putting it away. This is going to be a living document. It's going to constantly be tweaked, constantly be gone over. Uh, most of our expected results from our action plan are out to school year twenty-five, twenty-six. You know, every year having a step that we can measure. Uh, but assuming we hit twenty-five, twenty-six, like I said, this is not going into a binder and going away. We're going to be constantly refining, looking how we can get better and how we can refine our practices and better our instruction with an equity lens. So Suzanne is going to take over here for a minute to talk about some of the things we're already doing and working through.
Thank you, Tyler, and thank you, everyone, for giving some time tonight to talk about some stuff that, you know, we've already had, um, been building for us in the past year, if not more, that I think align really well with what we found with the equity audit, um, working for some of the goals there, and will align well with the equity action plan. Uh, so the first is those are that this year, all licensed faculty are participating during in-service days in, um, professional learning that's related to inclusive teaching and learning. And so that's sort of the greater umbrella, and every staff member, um, is, has the option to choose a learning pathway that they'll do sort of a deeper dive into. So those are universal design for learning, making sure that we're meeting the needs of the diverse learners in our classroom. Um, trauma-informed instructional practices, embedding SDL in academic instruction, SDL being social emotional learning, and how to make that relevant to a rigorous academic program. Um, identity conscious teaching and learning, thinking about how do I use what I know about my students and their lives to make my teaching more excellent and data for equity. So thinking about how do we use data to continuously improve what we're doing. Um, we also have ongoing partnerships with outside organizations. Outright Vermont has been invaluable in helping us to support LGBTQ youth. Um, specifically, we've started a really exciting partnership, or sort of restarted, I should say, partnership with Up For Learning, which works, many of you might know about Up For Learning, that they work with schools across the state to really build authentic youth adult partnerships that tap into the student voice and experience. And right now, we are, we have, uh, jumpstarted that again at Otter Valley for high schoolers. And that looks like are really exciting through forty-five students have stepped forward saying that they want to be part of positive school change, um, including the three findings that we found in the equity audit. And so I think that that will really boost the work that we're trying to do. And hopefully, as we start building that foundation at Otter Valley, we can start to build partnerships with Up For Learning at, uh, lower levels, primary levels. Um, and then we also have partnerships with Rutland Partners for Prevention, the Rutland NAACP. Those groups in particular have been really interested in helping, um, marginalized students of color and LGBTQ. Uh, all administrators this year are also participating in a professional learning opportunity from the Center for Educational Leadership, which is outside of the, or it's from the University of Washington. And that course is called Leading Equitable Schools. And it's a really exciting opportunity to kind of have an embedded more experience. So admin are really like going in schools, they're doing learning walks, they're hosting student focus groups and listening sessions for observations, thinking about, uh, you know, how can I be an equity-centered leader for my school? Um, there are a, there's a number of student-led affinity groups that are starting at Otter Valley. Some are starting, um, at elementary levels as well. Um, student-led groups just based around shared identity help sustain and support those students that have been found to be really wonderful supportive spaces for those students to feel safer. We've got, this is Kristen, so Kristen, feel free to jump in. It's really your, your initiative here, but, um, monthly meetings of the Student Advisory Council and the Parent Advisory Council. So, um, that's just starting this January, I believe. Uh, the Parent Advisory Council maybe got started a little earlier, I'm not sure. Um, but trying to get a representative body of both students and community members and parents thinking about, you know, how do we tap into all of the different stakeholders in our SU to inform what we do regarding equity and pretty much everything. Um, and beginning in January, hopefully, we're going to start having monthly webinars hosted by the Curriculum Instruction Assessment Department to just provide some more community engagement opportunities, um, learning opportunities for community members, families, parents, that feel relevant and connected to the needs of our communities. There's also been, I would say, um, anecdotally at least, uh, deepened commitment to restorative practices and getting our staff trained in restorative practices. So thinking about conflict, student conflict resolution and mediation, um, running circles, embedding SCL. Um, these practices that we know are, um, you know, important parts of connecting with young people and making them feel like they're safe and they belong. And then last but not least, um, you all have hopefully seen the email from Kristen yesterday. The equity mini-grant from the, um, the FBI has provided some funds to create book bundles for each pre-k through sixth classroom, just to infuse classroom library with three more books, um, children's books, that might provide windows and mirrors for students that are lacking in the classroom. Um, so thinking about windows being, you know, things that are outside of your own experience, things that are new, unfamiliar, um, and mirrors being things that reflect your experience. We want to make sure that every student has both windows and mirrors. So these book bundles will be created to just ensure that we are continuously reflecting critically on how do we select books and are we making sure that we have a diverse and inclusive library? Um, so this is a great opportunity to sort of build community around that. Um, with students, hopefully yourselves, and, um, teachers and community members. So I think that will be exciting as well.
So as you can see, we've done quite a bit of work, and there is still quite a bit of work to be done. But we are working through that process, and like I said, uh, the documents that we are working on, the plans that we're working on will always be there. They'll always be tweaked, and we will continue to work on that. So with that, does anyone have any questions?
The phrase implicitly biased, who has been implicitly biased? I want to speak.
Sorry. Do you, one more time?
Implicitly biased was used?
Yes.
Who has been implicitly biased and what will the consequences be? Bias is there, you have room for such a thing, but you have identified it in your report, that's all.
Yep.
There needs to be some action taken.
There would be, and that would fall within our, our, our school policies with hate and harassment and bullying.
Has any of that happened?
Um, yeah, it has. Yeah. I'm sure it has. Can I give you, you know, definite documentation? I can't at this point. Um, it's, it's, you know, protective for students. Um, but, uh, yes, our.
Implicitly biases are pretty.
I can jump in there too, if it's helpful.
If you want to, sure.
Um, implicit, implicit bias is really thinking about, um, implicit bias is a human experience because our brains are wired to shortcut for things that, you know, I'm not going to get too nerdy. I was going to get really nerdy and go back to like arcade man brain. Um, but we all have implicit bias. Society has trained us to make associations between things. Like when you say peanut butter, I think jelly, which is fine. There is no inherent conflict when I'm like peanut butter and jelly. But we also, um, by and large, see lots of implicit associations drawn through society. Um, you know, we might think of black and brown people and, um, criminal behavior, right? If those two associations are drawn too quickly and immediately, that's when, you know, we might make judgments that harm people. That's just one example. Um, so implicit bias is something that we all hold, and I think identifying it in our community is useful. Being able to understand what it means for us is useful to try to name, actively name, and not necessarily judge what's going on, but think about, um, you know, how do we shift towards better ways of being together? How can we work against some of those ingrained, socialized kind of, um, things that are happening in our brains? Implicit bias is different than prejudice, which is like constantly, is consciously taking action that's prejudicial towards somebody else. And I think that in, in the case of, you know, prejudicial behavior, that absolutely needs to be responded to and interrupted. And I think, um, the equity audit has shown that there's ways in which we need to do better in responding to issues of prejudice, discrimination, harassment, and bias. And, um, I have seen some, some positive strides, um, towards that. Um, and it, uh, it's a long and complicated process that involves, um, you know, growth from all folks. I don't know. That was probably too much information. But I wanted to differentiate between implicit bias and conscious bias and prejudice.
Does that answer your question?
No, not really, but I'll let it go.
So, so first of all, the findings came from Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium. We aren't saying, you know, this isn't us putting something up there that we necessarily have all of the data to point to this internally. What we're saying is after that external review that happened all of last year, student experiences, like student surveys, focus groups are telling us this. Parent surveys and focus groups are telling us this. Teacher surveys and focus groups are telling us this, that there's the very real possibility that implicit bias exists because of X, Y, and Z.
There's a possibility, but not we have found implicit bias. And that's very, that's, that's going over the scales a little bit. They're saying, we have found there's a possibility. That, I would rather see that written because currently that's what you're saying. That's what the state of it is, but not there is.
Right, but so.
That's very serious.
Yeah, so like Susannah said, um, implicit bias is something that we all have. So I will go out on a limb and say, yeah, we for sure have implicit bias in our system and each of us as individuals. About what? Like, who knows? It, you would have a really hard time evaluating or coming down on someone, student or adult, for an implicit bias because it's implicit for a reason. I don't know that I'm doing this. I don't know that when you, when, you know, um, I think of, you know, Christmas, I'm thinking of these people. I don't know until I'm necessarily like called on it or think about it. So it is more about the education. Let's have these conversations with teachers, with kids, with parents, so that you can start to do this deep thinking for yourself and think, huh, do I do that? Do I think about it? So people aren't being evaluated. There aren't consequences for implicit bias because you don't know that you're doing it. It does, if that.
And they're also saying that the lunch program is not equal. Is there kids not getting their meals from the lunch program?
I don't think that's what they're saying. The lunch program is unequal. Where did you?
They mentioned it, the fire.
I wonder if they're thinking about free and reduced lunch.
Yeah, so is that not being handed out?
So, no, what they're saying is, um, data shows that there are disproportionate or unequal, um, disciplinary, um, reactions, student experiences for students across a couple of indicators. Disability status, right? So in some, and I'll be very honest.
I'm talking about the free and reduced meal.
Same thing, right? So that there are disproportionate or unequal results and actions for students who receive free and reduced lunch as opposed to those who don't. It has nothing to do with the actual meal program. It has to do with students living below the poverty line.
As I did.
So it's, it's saying that, for instance, in school, let me give you an example of something that happened a couple of years ago. In school, um, there was a student who, for instance, had an infraction on an IEP. They got three-day suspension. Student had the exact same infraction, not on an IEP. They got a verbal warning. Same thing. A student living below the poverty line had an infraction, detention. Student, but living above the poverty line, same infraction, verbal warning. So those are unequal responses that are patterns.
So what I'm saying is we're being biased on how we treat the poor kids versus the kids that come from wealthier families.
We're saying we're finding, we're saying we're finding results that show. Yeah, so that's, this is the equity action.
Who is being punished for, for those actions? That's, that's my question. That, that's serious stuff.
Right, so I will tell you that we've made some significant changes at Otter Valley from the end of last year through this year, specifically because of some of those. So a lot of these are works in, in progress, right? So a lot of it is, we're trying to get at people's ingrained beliefs and their responses, not necessarily just, oh, you did this wrong. So some of it is a little harder to get at. But as Tyler said, if we get evidence of it, yes, building leaders absolutely respond to it. Absolutely.
A lot of what this work is, is reducing barriers as well. I would say the vast majority of it is not, um, that we're, we're seeing disparities between students below the poverty line and students above the poverty line because people are intentionally discriminating. A lot of it is, it's because there are barriers that exist to their success that we haven't identified and meaningfully acted on yet. So thinking about literacy rates. We see that, um, third graders living below the poverty line have lower literacy rates than students who do. And it's not because their teachers are doing anything deliberately to the students who receive free and reduced lunch. It's that there are likely many, many barriers to those students to, um, get to those reading levels that we need to get really curious about and, and train our teachers and our, um, support systems to meaningfully address. So, um, I think it's also this question of intention versus impact is most of this stuff is not anyone intentionally discriminating, but the impact is that some of our students are succeeding at different rates. And to your point, this is really, really important, and we do need to do something. So a lot of this work is thinking about what, what are the disparities, what are the barriers, and how do we address those?
My last thing is reading that, uh, the few pages that were sent out. The report says we are discriminating. The report says we are implicitly biased. But now when you explain it, no, we're not really discriminating. Nothing's intentional or nothing. That's how the report should be written. Because that fades value. It is literally, we're biased. We're racist. We're not open to anything. We have identified all these problems, but then I ask the questions and I get much softer explanations. That's my problem with that report. It says we're biased. We're, we have a problem. We do not treat people equally. But then I ask, how come? Well, it's not intentional, but it's written that we don't treat people equally.
Right, and so I think if you, um, student experiences, students and families who participated in the focus groups and surveys would say that that's true, that they are, that we are not treating people.
They say that, but the report says it is true.
Right, right. And the report is based on, no, no, the report is based on what students and parents are reporting. Yes.
The report also, the report says there's, um, there's data that says that there's disparities, but the report doesn't measure intentions and it doesn't, it does not come out and say that there's, there's discrimination. It says there, there's a lack of cultural understanding, um, which is hard.
And I wanted to punch my computer screen thinking there are people up there who are not treating every kid equally. Oh, really?
Yeah.
I wanted to.
It's really hard. It is extremely hard, and I think it's important not to, to your point, distance ourselves from the reality of it because we need to do something on behalf of our students. So I absolutely hear you.
And I also wanted to answer Becky's questions we saw in the chat. Uh, so kind of what Kristen said, you know, these are works in progress. You know, what trauma-informed instructional practices are we dealing with? What SCL? What does embedded SCL look like in our instruction? So essentially, you know, for SCL, we're looking at, you know, PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. You know, how can we best suit the needs of our kids in the classroom? Having them work together in groups, teaching them how to work together, teach them how to be nice to one another. Um, but these are works in progress. These are things that we are working with, with our teachers. Our PD strands that we have with our, with our teachers that, for our professional development, are these strands so we know we can work with our kids. Knowing that, you know, we are being, our kids have experienced a lot of trauma from COVID. Uh, we are working towards those progresses and making sure our kids are taken care of. So that is something that is ongoing and works in progress for our, for our teachers, that training, if you will.
And administrators are also participating in all of it as well because that's another big piece. Um, you know, administrators are as important in the puzzle as our teachers are, and they also need to be able to know what to look for, um, to, to be able to support teachers and students.
Our professional development is all, uh, for this year is all led by our coaching staff. And there are six different, excuse me, six different strands that could be picked from. And our administrators, just like our, our teaching faculty, are part of those groups. Any questions? Brett?
Kind of two, well, one's a question that should be pretty easy. Uh, the mini-grant, uh, is it possible that we have a list of the titles of those books?
Yes, we have. So we have seventy-five books that are nominated that, if you're curious, I can absolutely send that list. Um, they are really exciting. I have them in my office, and they're really beautiful to look at. Um, so there's seventy-five right now, and we're going to, through a process of looking at a rubric, identify the ones that we want to put into the different bundles. So the bundles are designed around great specific themes. So I think like preschool is, I am special and so are you. So we're going to be looking to see, you know, first of all, is this a high-quality book that, you know, students will like? Are the illustrations great? And we'll look at some other criteria. Um, and then we'll think about, you know, does this connect to the theme? And we'll pull it. So there's seventy-five titles now, and that would probably be, um, something, I guess, seven times three is twenty-one. So there's a tab on my shoulder. Twenty-one, um, titles, and those will definitely be sent out and celebrated as well. Um, and this question came up at the bar so board meeting. Um, you know, any curricular initiative also needs to pass through the procedures for, you know, curriculum approval at the, um, at that policy level. So it's not that, you know, we're just willy-nilly choosing books and that, that will be that, will be another process in addition to the one that we're taking with, um, the community.
And as Susannah said, and hopefully you all saw my email, you're all encouraged to, if you can, join in and be a part of that, that, um, that group to take a look at that curriculum. But she'll definitely send out the list, no matter what.
I think it'd be good. I mean, just. I think it'd be good. I mean, just because these types of things, even though they shouldn't be, sometimes they can be triggering. So as board members, it'd be good if we if we had the list.
And and even if you can't participate at that level, you will see it before it to be able to have a dialogue about the books that were chosen.
And then the second thing I was gonna say was, uh it's not so much a que, well, I guess it is, there's a question in there. But it's also partially a statement in just that um biases implicit, whether you know, whether it's intentional or not, right? They don't stop when you leave school, right? I mean, that's something that continues on forever, right? I mean, job interviews, uh applying for uh an apartment, you know, whatever. Are we, is part of this plan to kind of help teach students how to cope with the realities that there are going to be biases that they're going to experience once they leave school? I mean, our all we can't do anything about.
Yeah, our end-all goal for all kids graduating from the supervisory union is to be part of the world and to teach them how to be part of that world. So yes, to answer your question, simple answer is yes, we are teaching kids how to work through these situations and hopefully be better in them and maybe somewhere down the line, you know, in my soapbox here, eliminate them, but.
And part of it, as Susanna had said, is, you know, we have Padua and Brendan that sit as the student reps for the school board. But there are a whole bunch of other opportunities for kids to be involved and practice student voice and be able to participate in government. Student Advisory Council is just one, Up for Learning, that is a phenomenal, like the fact that there are forty-five of these students who want to participate and making a change in their school and their community are huge. So, you know, to your point, Brett, it's really about, okay, so here's what you need from us as adults. At the end of the day, what do you need from your community and what are you gonna do if that doesn't happen, right? So how so so, you know, how do you build up those life skills is a huge part.
Yeah, I just kind of feel like the risk is, right, that you you point out these these sad realities, right? That there are going to be biases toward and and it could be towards everyone. I mean, at some point in your life, you're gonna come across someone who's biased towards you for whatever reason, right? But if we start pointing them out, that can be defeating and you don't want students to get defeated and then kind of go into life with sort of like a, it doesn't really matter, it's not gonna make any difference. No one's gonna take me seriously because of A, B, or C, right?
I will say as a part of the Center for Ed Leadership that Susanna had mentioned, the Leading for Equity, we all as administrators are in each building every month together as a group. We were just at Nesherby a couple of weeks ago talking to fifth and sixth graders about, I mean, it could be some pretty tough stuff, but it really ended up being, you know, how how much freedom do you have in your school? Where do you have opportunities to lead? Where do you have like voice and choice? And and what can adults do differently or better for you? And that's really awesome to hear, but when you get to grade seven through twelve, it takes on a different flavor, right? They're less willing to be generous with adults kind of failing them, um you know, than fifth and sixth graders are. So what's that disconnect? How do we empower, um you know, our youngsters? How do we as adults kind of build up the skill? Because earlier we had been at Otter Valley and heard same sort of questions from nine to twelve students and the answers were very different, very hard to hear about experiences that they were having and at the end of the day, they just wanted adults to respond for them. Right? Like they, right, so at five, six, they're able to say, oh, you know, I don't necessarily have much freedom, but the teachers are trying hard. Right? They're they're so great. They've got such busy schedules. You get to nine to twelve and kids are a little less generous. Um with, you know, their their, you know, their feelings generally about adults. So kind of back even to Eric's point, we have a lot of work to do.
So we've got a minute left in our assigned time. I have many questions. And uh so how do you want to handle this? Should I submit them to the?
Just ask your questions.
Okay, I've got a lot of them. Tyler, are you, uh is this an RNESU project as opposed to an OVU U one?
It's an RNESU, yes.
So you're here as a courtesy to us, basically?
I guess, sure.
Okay. Um the audit's been available since mid-June, over a year ago. We had a discussion on this board about structural problems with the audit and and biases inherent in the audit. So I have two questions about the audit. First, why haven't we seen it? And secondly, why is it accepted as gospel without further discussion of problems within the audit?
Um why haven't you seen it? And Kristen, if you want to jump in, go ahead, it's fine. Um we need a time to work through it. Uh it's our it's our data, it's our district's data, our supervisory union's data. We need a time to process that and work through that so we have a working plan for that information.
But school boards don't have anything to do with that processing?
At this point, I would err to our building, our central office administrators to work through that plan.
Okay, so you've created this entire plan with no school board input?
I'll step in. So that so so that that's 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 not accurate actually actually an accurate description of the timeline or what happened. So um the equity audit was all year last year. Um and we had several presentations. Susanna and I sat here at least twice last year to OBU Board, to BUU Board, also to RNESU Board, having conversations about, you know, kind of this is the compelling why behind why we're digging into this information. The information that kind of pushed us to call for an outside person, an outside contractor, to kind of take a look at was that we found internal evidence that there were an awful lot of discrepancies. Again, the, you know, the example that I gave you was fairly common that, you know, you could you could go in Power School or Swiss and put in a disciplinary infraction and find very different um outcomes and responses. That's just like one piece of the flavor. So we also know that there are very different experiences at some of our elementary schools over others. Um you know, does Otter Creek as one of our highest poverty schools, one of our most remote schools, have the same access to resources? Do they have the same access to staff? Um OCA has a lot of staff turnover. Is that based on poverty, right? So there's just a lot of questions, a lot, a lot of questions that made us kind of dig deep and take a look. And so we worked with Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium. They looked at achievement data, attendance data, discipline data. They looked at policies, procedures, and practices, not just from last year, for the last five years. They also did surveys for students, teachers, staff, administrators, parents, and they also did focus groups. So it took them a really long time to do it. We got it mid-June, say the end of June. We also had a high amount of administrator turnover, if we're being super honest, and we kind of had to prioritize getting our buildings open um and getting principals where they needed to be. And to be super honest, it's a two-hundred-and-forty-page document.
I've seen it, I read it.
Um and it needs to be dug into. And some of the information in the audit is potentially um information that is confidential in that you, there's some sections that are, the end size of the student group is small enough that we don't want to be able to identify certain students in the information. Um so we have to be really, really careful about it. Then, like Tyler said, administrators really dug deep. We were very planful and thoughtful about what's the best way to share this information. The best way to share this information was to give people a small piece of it because it's a lot to digest. When you think about implicit bias and you think about, you hear some of the things that students were saying, that's a hard thing to hear as an educator, as a parent, as an adult in the community. Um you know, that's tough stuff. So to be honest, we we're intentionally a little bit slow with it. So this is the next step. We haven't done anything with with it except to now share with BUU on Monday, you here. We've shared, we're sharing with our parent advisory and our student advisory right after we come back for the holidays. And then the next step is to share the draft action plan. So you are, it isn't a courtesy, you are very much a part of the draft action plan and what we want to see in all of our schools. And it's RNESU because centralized services are a huge part of that equation, right? Is BUU getting the same stuff as as OVU U, not because it's a courtesy. So you as a board, um just like parents, community members, we're we're trying to be as transparent as with this as we absolutely can.
So what opportunities does the board have to amend any of this, to change it, object to it, stop some things?
Well, will, when are we scheduled to share out the draft um action plan?
Uh in February.
So it's a draft, so give give us feedback on the draft.
Okay, so um I've got to disagree with your characterization of us, what we were formed of last year. The the only time I heard Susanna speak and maybe spoke at a meeting I missed was uh she gave about a twenty-minute presentation. There was maybe five minutes of response from us. Uh I got, I think, one question in. So I I don't feel like the board has been informed and, you know, as you know, last year.
Can you speak for yourself?
I'm speaking for myself, Derek.
No, you're saying.
I've got the floor, Derek, thank you.
I I statements are really good.
When uh it's uh over a year ago, after I read the 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 equity questions, that what the report's based on, but a lot of structural problems with, a really simple one, for example, is that it's obviously designed for large urban school areas. Uh for example, based on that report, we should have a sign language interpreter in this room at this moment. Uh we should have uh concerns with multiple languages uh being spoken in the schools. It's obviously, it's something that's not very applicable to um to a small rural school district in New England. So there are built-in problems with the report that have been unaddressed um that that we need to that we need to address before we accept this report as the basis for massive changes within our district. Um so there's that. Um and, you know, it has been available since mid-June. I understand the issues with all the turnover and everything. But we can't talk about it with anything, anything approaching honesty and clarity until we've seen it. The next question is, the only survey response I've seen was one Susanna spent out, sent out last school year. And it's appeared to be based on a handful of self-selected responses. Um so I want to know how many people were um responding to the survey that came up with key finding number three?
Three, if of students, three hundred thirty-nine.
Next question is, at what age would identity-conscious teaching and learning begin?
Well, identity-conscious teaching is about the the teacher. So a preschool teacher could dig into that.
So identity consciousness is is about the teacher, it's not about the student?
Yeah, yeah. These are PD strands that teachers, there are six strands, teachers get to choose what's interesting to them this year.
Can you explain to me what identity consciousness is for?
I'm not teaching that strand. Susanna, can you talk a little bit about it?
Sure. Identity consciousness is thinking about four questions and ensuring that you have fallen four questions and ensuring that your students can answer them in the affirmative. Do you see me? And me and all of my complexity. Do you hear me? Will you treat me fairly and will you protect me? And that's what that strand is really all about.
The next question has to do with some of the implicit biases we've been hearing today. There's some really dubious um assumptions built into this discussion. For example, Tyler said that implicit bias was was tied in with bullying and harassment earlier today. It's uh and I think that was the basis of, I don't want to speak for him, but I think that was the basis of Eric's question. Um uh they're 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 very different concepts. And furthermore, the concept of implicit bias is a twenty-first century idea that we've we've um you know, there's been a lot of experience of of bias and bigotry in American life um for many, many years and many, many groups have been uh exposed to it for a long time. We don't really talk anymore about, you know, for example, I I can tell you that in eighteen sixty-six, the Burlington Police Chief blamed crime in Burlington on a disorderly class of Irishmen. So we've overcome many different types of bias and bigotry and prejudice in America um without this uh this assumption that implicit bias haunts us all and we all and and some groups in particular have to feel um responsible for these things. It's this is a new idea. It's a very, very dubious one. Um we haven't discussed any of that. It's just been accepted by by uh the group.
Can I just have for some clarification on that?
Sure.
Sure, go for it.
Um what do you mean certain groups are responsible for that? I didn't hear that as part of the discussion. I thought we were discussing implicit bias, which I think at this point is an understood concept that is present in everything. And that is there, are you sort of trying to say that there's harm in acknowledging that we all carry implicit biases?
Yeah, I think I think it's a way, well.
And that we're and that we're implicitly implying that certain people are being.
Oh, sure. I think this, I think this, I think this politically and culturally, there's there's baked into it an idea that some people carry these biases within them more than others and need to feel more guilty about them, are are more responsible for the harms of the past.
Who is your concern about guilt and making people feel guilty?
My concern is that I think this is a bad way to teach children.
But what's the way? I guess I I'm still feeling like I don't quite understand what you're getting at and I'm wondering, I I mean, I know you're getting at something, Kevin, but I'm just trying to understand what it is that you're getting at. What, we haven't said yet how we're teaching children or how I'm not, I'm using weed.
These concepts are, I'm sorry, Sam, are leading us down a bad path that um.
So if knowledge that there's implicit bias and that there are children in our school who don't feel safe in our school, is that leading us down a bad path in your opinion?
Yeah, I think children.
Have you had an experience with a child in these schools? I've had experience with three children in these schools who haven't felt safe in different times. Have you had that experience? And have you thought as a parent that you wish there was something as a community that we could do differently?
You know, there are there are plenty of things that I think are would be, should be different about the schools and there are certain things I think should be different about the community. What I'm saying is that these concepts, this structure, is a bad way to um improve the lot, our lives together. And uh we need to think very, very carefully. I mean, the trains left the station and it's moving along. And I'm saying, let's have a discussion about what this audit is, what it suggests, how it works, whether there are biases built into it before we jump on the train. I'm not saying that there are kids in the schools who don't feel um happy, who feel that they're endangered, who feel bullied. I know all of those things go on. I've witnessed those things. I don't, I'm not saying there's no racial discrimination in the schools. Um I know that happens to be true as well. What I'm saying is that this system of addressing those problems is going to lead to worse and more problems and that we need to be very, very careful about our approach.
But I think what I feel like I'm hearing in that, though, is that it's less about the data and the findings, which is actually the point that we're at, and it's a little bit more about the process and the implementation, which is which is yet to come. And we all have uh we all have the ability at this point to be part of that discussion. Right in the wrong, I don't know if we do, but you're doing.
You do.
And that moving forward, it's important that we're all and unfortunately, it also is important that we're talking to more people and that there are more voices around the table um when we are talking about what the implementation's gonna look like. I mean, it sounds like we're, and I was, I keep pointing to something that's not there, but um I would love for us to go back to that that timeline and kind of what it looks like because that was a lot to take in in a really quick presentation, although you did a fantastic job. But it was a lot to try to remember because um I think a lot of the public haven't seen the report. We don't, we don't.
Nobody's apparently seen it.
But um so it's hard to like try to remember all these things all at all at once. But it seems like we're at the beginning stages, which I think, I think that's an important point that you're bringing up, that we all need to be a part of, um I mean, to the extent possible, thinking about what the implementation's gonna look like or even what the plan, I mean, I guess planning is next, what even the planning is gonna look like and trying to have more voices around the table while we do it.
Yeah, as as far as the data goes, um we haven't seen it, so I I can't comment on whether it's good or not. Um uh that would be very enlightening. Um like, once again, you use the same metaphor, the trains left the station, we haven't been on board, we're not even on the caboose. Uh we need to, if if you want the school board, if it's not a courtesy and you want the school board to endorse the site, these ideas, and to enthusiastically jump in and support them, um you haven't done anything to to present us with a feeling that that we are participating and have had access to the data. So that's that's, I think.
So, that's, that's, I think, the first and necessary step. I mean, we can't be expected to endorse something we haven't read, you know.
First of all, when you say we, you're talking, you're trying to say the whole board. At this point, that's only-
I think it's true for the whole board.
Well, I don't think it is.
Because who's, who's read, who's read it?
Have you?
Of course not. I, we've just been told. We haven't been presented with it. I read the two hundred and forty-page questionnaire. I haven't seen any of the responses to it or any of the recommendations.
But that's not our, that's not our job. Our job, that's their job.
Well, once again, we're not going to get into a question about the school board's job that we, we really don't want to have this discussion, Lori, right now.
So, I think what I would like, I think Susanna was trying to jump in and say something-
I think I talked over you too, Susanna. That's right. I would, I would like to hear what she's-
No, no, you actually said what I was going to say, which is that I think, um, what I hear you saying about the train, you know, I, I would say that, um, implementation and, and figuring out what implementation looks like is still at its very fledgling stages, and I, I agree that the board needs to absolutely, and that Tyler and I was just in a meeting, I was interested in talking about how central board participation, um, feedback input is and that, but I, um, I would say implementation has not really fully begun. We're, we're, are really just in the beginning of the drafting stages. So, when I think about what, um, what the how looks like, which is what I hear you saying, Kevin, you know, we're not really, we're not really there yet.
Right, this is, I mean, another example of this is the seventy-five books, right? I think there's a bit of a Trojan horse here. We've got, we've got, uh, we've had a lot of discussion about poverty, and, you know, I've been really clear on this board. I think poverty is the biggest and overwhelmingly the biggest issue in our district. How many of the seventy-five books are going to address poverty? Uh, I, I, I think this, this other thing's going on here, and, um, I think a lot of it's going to be about gender and sexuality. People are very dubious about those things being taught to their children. This stuff has got to be open and transparent.
I was about for you to come on, on February fourth, and I really mean that, because I think, um, those feelings are, you're not alone in having those gut feelings, and I, I really, really am hungry for folks to start to broaden their perspective of what, what it means, what inclusion and equity actually mean. As far, it absolutely includes gender and sexuality, but it's so much deeper of a concept, and so part of the strategy of this event in itself is to broaden that understanding, so we can, we can start to have more thoughtful conversations that address all of our-
I just think that anybody who's been paying attention to school boards in the last two years, uh, and what's going on nationally with these sorts of, uh, issues has got to be, have their eyes open to this. I mean, we, we cannot pretend that these issues aren't out there and that aren't dangerous to community cohesion and aren't extremely divisive. And, uh, what appears to me to be a kind of preset and, uh, pre-decided plan that's, that's being presented to us as something that's a finished thing is, uh, dangerous to this community's cohesiveness and, um, ability to get along, and we are asking for trouble if we don't, if we don't address openly, uh, these issues, if we don't have frankly, a lot of Trump voters show up at these meetings and buy in, you are asking for disaster. That wasn't a question. I got some more questions. Let's see, um, where, who are the equity officers being each school and what, uh, what would it cost and how much? Would these people be assigned to that job, or would they, uh, be teachers who are, who are taking extra time or time out of their teaching to do it?
That's yet to be determined. That's part of the plan, and now it's yet to be determined what that is.
Those are just, the, and, and again, the equity audit is one piece of, a very large piece, but a piece um, of the puzzle that's informing the draft action plan, right? So, just because that's a recommendation or any of the, how many recommendations were there? Six doesn't mean that those will populate themselves on the, the actual equity plan.
So, the, the equity action plan is informed by the recommendations, but it's not the recommendations.
And to be fair, I, I've been a part of this district for four years, and all four years, there has been a district equity committee. Like, this isn't new, new work, and some of it, like I said, is informed by the equity audit, but there's an awful lot that was happening or is happening parallel at the same time.
We're not alone with our equity plan, right?
No.
We're working with the state and other agencies to help us, so-
Yeah, that's not comforting to me. You know, I, I'm coming from a place where I've, I've seen this kind of thing happen in the universities now for thirty years, and I've seen the, uh, the really frankly terrible consequences it's had for intellectual life for, um, the ability to speak openly, for, um, the, the closing off of ideas and free discussion. You know, my concern, quite frankly, is with setting up a system where, uh, we'll be instituting, uh, uh, comissars in our schools that will, that will dictate curriculum to teachers.
So, you're instituting what?
Comissars. It's a Soviet word for political officers. That's been, you know, common in the English language. That, uh, that are going to be, you know, mandating books, um, telling teachers what to teach. I'm very, very concerned about this, and it starts, uh, we, we need to take a deep dive into the audit, and we need to do it publicly.
So, Becky said, uh, Becky, it seems like trainings in trauma-informed inclusion, et cetera, would be good things for the board to have. So, you know, we could do a training around that, uh, if everybody agrees. And I'm sure Becky, you've had trainings based on, on your job. You've had that kind of training, so you probably know who to go to locally or whatever.
And that's one of the things that the curriculum, that Susanna and Tyler were talking about, that the curriculum department is trying to do monthly, trainings that are available for parents, communities, all these departments.
And I think to go along with my comment, that, uh, most of this work is work that the adults need to do, and it's not necessarily hiring people, but it's people learning the skills, so what is trauma-informed? And, and one of those things is, um, children who live in poverty don't necessarily have positive advocacy skills for themselves. So, instead of saying, I made a mistake, they act out, they do things that aren't, um, you know, acceptable, then they get in trouble versus somebody who lives in a middle-class, upper-class family who has better advocacy skills for themselves. And so, that's a piece of that inequity around kids who are getting in trouble for the same thing. And those are the things that it seems like this plan is starting to look at, is what are the adults in the building need to be aware of and how to, and how to be, how to, uh, make decisions based on the information that they learn. And yes, that is very much what we do at the Parent-Child Center, Lori, um, and we do have students from all of the schools. So, anybody who lives in Addison County, it could be Fairhaven, it could be Art Valley, Lethbury, Bristol for Jets. We have students from all of the schools who have definitely had, um, inequitable experiences and have a lot of trauma, and they come to us, and we constantly have those trainings, because we have to be on our toes all the time. It's not a quick and easy thing to do.
Thanks. Any other questions for Tyler or Susanna or Kristen?
Sorry, I had a question.
Yeah, sure, go for it.
I feel like we've gone over soundbite, but I just wanted to, um, ask again a little bit about, and maybe it's not even so much a question, but, um, the, the process moving forward. I think probably the greatest challenge is going to be trying to, um, bring people to the table to talk about these things, and, and it's, you know, it's not easy no matter what, right, Kevin? But I, you know, I guess, I'm curious sort of what the main vehicle for that is, so that those of us who want to be part of it are, I mean, I'm part of the parent advisory committee, so I'm sure I'll know what's going on, but for, to sort of know, for people to, how can people know how to tap into the process as it's moving forward? And how can those of us who are interested in it help spread the word and get people to the table? I am so happy that this is happening. My kids are older now, so we missed out on some of it, but, you know, tamping down the problem and pretending that there aren't biases wasn't working for, you know, my kids, other people's kids. Now, trying to address the issues and come around the table and learn how to talk to each other again, you know, I, I feel like there's hope. I don't feel like there's, um, the same sort of problems that we're hearing from Kevin. So, um, if you could just tell us a little bit about moving forward, what the process looks like, and how can more people, um, be a part of it?
Well-
Can I interrupt just for a second? Sam, I want to thank you for, publicly on the record, for your courtesy to me tonight, because a lot of people got really upset about this stuff, call each other names. You haven't done it. We've been friends for many years. I want you to know I appreciate it, and I welcome further discussion with you.
Oh, no, thank you, Kevin. I appreciate that. I totally disagree with you right now, but I also fully respect you. So, um, I, you know, I appreciate that. Um, and, you know, I, the guy's a smart guy. He's got good stuff to say. But, um, so can you just, yeah.
So, uh, yeah, so doing exactly what you are doing right now, being part of the, you know, the, um, parent group, our student groups will, uh, influence this process. The board will influence this process. So, uh, keeping track of board meetings, keeping track of the parent, um, action group, um, being a voice for us, yourself, being on the community and working with, uh, parents and bringing them into those meetings, that's how this is going to be play out. The, like I said, it's very much in draft form. We are methodically going through a process of ruling this out with, and getting different, uh, feedback from different groups. So, that's going to be ongoing, so working with the, uh, the parent group, working with the student group, bringing people into the board meetings and having conversations. Once we do, um, start putting this information out there for feedback, that's going to influence everything.
So, coming to the board meetings is sort of where people will-
And I think the, I think the board and the parent advisory and the student advisory, like Tyler said, will all have a, okay, so how do we get this out to larger groups, right? Like, the student, the student group last month said, stop sending us emails, Mrs. Stewart. No one reads them. I was like, okay, so how do I talk to, right? How do I get to students? Um, so, so same, I, I'm really, I'm really good at that. Um, so, same thing with parents and then the board. So, you know, to like Kevin's point, how do we get this out to the broader community? Who, even if you don't have students in the school, your voice is still important. We still need your feedback. And part of the reason why we didn't just mass release the, the audit is that it's informed by things other than the audit, and also, at its depth, is such a huge thing to consume, to say, hey, here it is, give us feedback. Like, that's, we needed to come up with some sort of a draft. Here's what we're thinking based on that, and then grab feedback, so it's a little bit more manageable. But so-
And it's also very emotional. I mean, I'm thinking about even folks who have shared tonight, right? And I think it's important that we allow ourselves to feel the feelings that this information brings up. So, thinking about how do we use our emotional intelligence to make plans about sharing, uh, bring people to the table in a way that allows them to be their best selves, to show up with the intention to really have dialogue as opposed to debate, and be put in our students first, and also make space for the, you know, as we see with teachers too, you know, as we've been sharing this audit and that administrators have been sharing this audit, really feel what, what, we say, you know, we already knew this, right? But it's, it's a pain in the, or there's lots of complicated different feelings that can come up when we see it. I think that's important. Um, we've been talking a little bit about, um, you know, we looked at, uh, up in Milton, they had a similar process where they hosted a community forum, and they really thought about, you know, how do we bring people to the table that creates dialogue and creates community and has enough lifting tone while also addressing these really important issues. But I think to your point, and I think like the parent council will be invaluable to this, we're still making those plans about how do we, how do we get stakeholder input in really responsible, authentic ways? And I would say like that conversation is still in process, but it could look like, and to Kristen, you know, talking about, they, you know, emailing students is not the move. So, you know, in the fall, thinking about creating a video that they watch during advisory that has key, um, key pieces included.
Never know.
You know, we have students partner with us to deliver the information, because they're, they're more likely to listen to their peers than they are to, you know, an adult, not some of the time. So, we still have to get creative, but be really, really thoughtful and responsible about how we go about it.
Does that answer your question, Sam?
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Tyler and Susanna, for that. All right, so, um, because, uh, we are a little bit behind at the moment, and Brenda Fleming is here with us, and so is, uh, Ms. Alexander, um, and our teach, other principals. And we're going to start next with our facilities, or actually our budget update. So, Brenda, if you'd like to take the floor?
Great, thank you. So, um, can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I sent in some paper copies, and from this week till last week, a lot of information has kind of fallen into place, and, um, it's the time of year where things keep coming fast and furious. Literally at six nineteen, I'm seeing version two of the equalized pupil. So, these numbers will still change a little bit, but I had enough of the information, enough of the numbers to kind of put together a preliminary look at what an equalized tax rate would be. And so, this would be the tax rate before applying on a level of appraisal. And so, um, the papers that I gave you, I think they start with a little chart at the front, so kind of that answers to begin with as to what we're looking at. And then behind it is, um, uh, the, the new proposed budget. And you'll note that in the second, the last column on the right, I put the original, the, the draft budget that we talked about, uh, two weeks ago now. So, the programs and services and everything we talked about in that budget has not changed. So, I did not update the slides and did not figure you would appreciate me going through all of the slides again. So, I just wanted to kind of give you that information for reference and just let you know it changed. And there are the holes that we talked about missing in December. And so, the, the first one is December fifteenth, teachers notify us of potential retirements, and we can make some judgments on what the new teacher, uh, replacement might be. We did really only receive one retirement, and it is a science position at the high school. So, um, I expect that that will not be a cost savings. Those are hard positions to find and fill. But I did include the sick leave buyout for that teacher. Vocational education is still in flux, but I feel very confident with the vocational, the Stafford numbers. They did set their tuition rate, and I do have the number of pupils that we apply that rate to. Just kind of an FYI or a reminder, it is, um, an average of the students enrolled over the last six semesters. And, um, so just as an FYI, it's forty point two one six. And that's why it's a weird number, because they are a full-day, full-program, but we average that semesters. You don't always get, you know, forty, forty-one, forty-three numbers. Um, and then I did the best I could to estimate Hanaford. I was unsuccessful at figuring out where their budget was, but I know that they have a significant increase in their budget, because last year they approved a bond, and they have the first year payment. So, I have done a good job to kind of estimate that a little bit closer. And last budget, I had said just a flat five percent. Really confident with the separate students, again, forty point two one six students, and we only have two point eight two students at Hanaford. So, I am estimating that that cost is actually going up forty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-two. And then the assessments, so, um, from our meeting, the following week was Rattlin Northeast. They did have enough information in order to set their budget, and as a reminder, some costs, their budget was set, um, a little bit high, because some of the costs were shifted from local budgets into the central office budget for high-cost, extraordinary viable work students. And so, that would be students who do not qualify for special education, but their cost of services, their cost of education exceeds sixty-five thousand dollars. So, we're going to centralize those- So we're going to centralize those and pool those for both administrative efficiencies as well as budget consistency. So that assessment is also determined based on the shift of the pie, right? How much are Barstow students and how much are our students? And that increased $76,295. So this budget to last budget increases $125,757. So what does that all mean? So if you kind of look at that chart that I think is on the front page, I'm just going to walk you through how we get down to a tax rate again because I know you don't live and breathe this like I do and you only hear me say this once or twice a year. So we started the total budget, we subtract out local revenues. And local revenues are revenues that do not need to be raised through the statewide tax. They include things like the Burtit reimbursement for the debt service at Lottra. And they normally would also include the ELE reimbursement for the debt service at Nashabe. I wanted to kind of present a worst case scenario. We started a conversation at the last board meeting about maybe not drawing from the ELE fund to pay for that debt service to kind of give that fund an opportunity to rebound and regrow. So in this proposal, I pulled that out. I can definitely put it back in in the future. We can also decide maybe to, to put half of it in. We can go anywhere we want with that. But I decided to show you kind of what the sort of worst case would look like. And then if you wanted to put more money into it, it would then reduce the tax rate. So that is the biggest reason why you are seeing from last year to this year that the local revenues are going down. So then you get this term net education spending, which is important because it's the first number in the formula to determine taxes. So you take that net education spending, which is simply what needs to be raised by property tax, by homes, by statewide property taxes, and you divide it by our equalized pupils. Version one of our equalized pupils is 1,253.66, which is down about 21.4. And honestly, I can't remember what I told which board, but we monitor this. Alexis, the school secretary, is on myself, really worked hard with Shar's help to kind of monitor this number because it's so important in setting the tax rate. And I feel pretty confident that it is very close, if not right on. And maybe you'll remember, you'll recall in last meeting, we talked about how last year there were 36 students who dropped out. And that was kind of a catch up of, you know, kind of cleaning up pandemic, sort of missing students or lost students. So seeing a decline of 21.4 students doesn't surprise me. We also saw some decline in kindergarten at Lotra and some decline. Actually, that was the only elementary school with a decline. So when you divide that out, you get the education spending for equalized pupils. This is a important number in the formula because this determines your homestead tax rate. And so what does that mean? So that's where the tax commissioner's letter comes into play. And the tax commissioner, if you may recall, for the second year, announced an unprecedented high or an increase in the yield. And the current yield this year is $13,314. The announced yield is $15,479. So that's an increase of 16.26%. So what that means is last year, $1 on the homestead tax rate bought 13,314 dollars of spending for equalized pupils. Now that same dollar actually buys $15,479. So that's really good news. So our $1 buys us more spending. I'm going to caution you on that really good news to not, to not, to recognize that while we can't control it, it will be adjusted by the common level of appraisal. So I'll circle back to that in a minute. So when you make those adjustments, I'll also remind you that the yield is set by the legislature. So what is announced to us by the commissioner of taxes is formula driven in statute. The legislature then looks at more recent or more at the time, more current information on education fund surpluses and other tax revenues. And in the last legislation, legislation that they passed, the budget bill, usually mid to late, early to mid May, is when they will solidify the yield. I think I did say this before and I'll say it again. I don't predict the actions of a board and I don't predict the actions of a legislature. But I will say that since we have had a yield, I haven't seen the legislature and solidify or finalize the yield at a rate lower than what the tax commissioner had advertised. So again, I'm not making any promises that that will be the yield, but historically it has been fairly constant. I was very concerned last year when we had, you know, a $2,000 increase in the yield as well. It went from $11,000 and changed to $13,000. And I thought, would we see a dip this year, you know, to kind of self correct? So again, this is the second year with unprecedented increases in yield. It is formula driven and part of the formula does include an inflationary factor. So it's not altogether surprising. So what does that mean? So our current equalized tax rate is $1.27, rounded up maybe to $1.28. And this proposed rate with the new yield of $50,479 and the equalized pupils of 1,253.66 is $1.21. So we're seeing a six or seven cents tax decrease. So that's where our control sort of ends, right? This is the board can make decisions on the budget. They can make decisions on revenues to the extent of whether we want to pull more out of the ELE fund or you want to consider letting it bounce back a little bit or something in between. But you can't really make, and we monitor and work to make sure our equalized pupil number is the very best and closest to reality of what it can be. But after that, you don't really have any control. And the final step in converting that unified tax rate to what a school or a town person is willing to pay is based on their common level of appraisal. So I know we talked a little bit about this. Again, I have to apologize. I'm not sure if I spoke about it to the Rattlin Northeast Board or to the Barstow Board or to you, so I apologize if I'm repeating myself. We, I do expect common level of appraisals will decrease. So common level of appraisals is a year average that looks at what homes are selling for as compared to what they are listed for in local brand lists. And so if you look at this chart on the bottom and you look over to the left hand column, you can see those are the rates for the CLAs of last year. And so you can also then see how that affects the tax rate. So just going to walk you through Brandon's. So Brandon's last year was 93%. And so what that means is a house that is listed for $93,000 on the Brandon brand list sold for 100. That's really what it means. So it's under appraised by 7%. Because it's under appraised by 7%, the, if you look at the first column, the fiscal year 23 column, the unified tax rate of $1.28 is increased by that 7%. That's how CLA works. So when the CLA goes down, and I expect that it may because we know from the beginning of the pandemic and we're now into third year of the pandemic, price values have increased drastically and considerably. They're starting to level off now and maybe, you know, we've heard a lot about the supply and demand and the lack of housing. So I'm not sure where that's going to land, but I would be very surprised if we did not start seeing some of these CLAs decline. And depending on how much they decline will depend on what the final tax rate is. And so you can see I very cleverly blocked out the proposed rates for you because I don't have the CLA numbers yet. So I've done a lot of talking and I don't know if anyone has any questions, if I missed anything?
I have a housekeeping question and that's all it is. Do Stafford and Hanford students count on our?
For equalized pupils?
Or for equalized pupils, yeah.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So they do count in our equalized pupils. And just to remind you, equalized pupils is a formula and it is a weighted pupil count. So currently, it's recently going to change. It's changing in 2026, I believe, due to new weights. But currently preschool students are weighted down to 40% because they only attend school 10 hours a week. K through six students are weighted at 100%. So they count as, you know, straight, straight students. And then seven through 12 counts as 113% because the last time they did an evaluation of the equalized pupil formula, they determined that the cost to educate a secondary student was 13% higher. So absolutely, the Hanford, the Stafford, even the early college students still count in our equalized pupil number.
Thank you.
The, the funds, the ELE and Burtit funds? Is it possible to get a number of where they're at so we kind of can make an intelligent decision there?
So we are not in control of the Burtit fund and that is all done by the town of Pittsburgh. So, and we are only given a report once a year, which I believe, when do we see that report, Brenda? Is it March or April?
You usually see it, yeah, I think you usually see it with, to be honest with you, I can't remember if we do it with the reorganization. I'm pretty sure that's.
I think so, yeah, probably in March. So we normally see that in March because they only let us see that once a year. But that fund has been very, very healthy for a very long time, even during the pandemic. So, but if you went back to our March minutes from a year ago, you would be able to look at that. We don't get updated reports every month.
What about the ELE fund?
The ELE fund actually is, we just talked about this a couple of months ago or maybe a month ago. The ELE fund is for Nashabe and it is mainly invested in stocks. You know, ones that you would recognize, IBM, Google, those kinds of things. And right now, some of those are taking a really bad hit. And so they, the people who manage that fund, and I can't remember the name of them, but they actually gave a presentation last two months ago and let us know that at the current rate that we were taking money, it may only last for another six years. And that is not something that we want or think should happen. I don't think anyway. And so therefore we brought it forward to the board that we may want to think about not using those funds to allow it to rebound like Brenda said.
And would that have to be a separate item on the ballot?
No, that is something that we would get to determine as a board.
Well, here's why I'm asking.
Sure.
And maybe someone can answer this because I'm relatively new and I'm definitely pretty stupid. So I remember when we voted on a bond for putting in the pellet furnace. Now, I'm a Pittsburgh resident, right?
Yeah.
So I remember it saying that that money was going to come out of the Burtit fund.
That's correct, yeah.
Is that how it was also proposed at Nashabe?
It was, yeah.
So then is it a little bit disingenuous to now come back years later and say, well, now we're going to fund that?
I think that if we can explain to our constituents that we do not want that fund to completely burn out and that therefore because of what's going, I mean, we could never have predicted three or four years ago that what was going to happen, happened. So, and it's not to say that we won't continue to use the ELE fund because we may not want to use our own funds. But I think it's important for us as the board to make sure that the longevity of that fund remains and not to just keep using it until it's gone. Because then we have to explain to the constituency when it's gone in six years that we still have however many years of a pellet boiler to fund. And so it might be smart for us to take some of that, or maybe all of it this year, to allow it to rejuvenate itself. That, that's the only way. But yes, you're right, that's how it was sold at the time. But at the time, the ELE fund had well over a million dollars and right now it's down to just under 600.
And could that be a separate item on the ballot in March? Is that something we have control over?
No, you have control over that.
Yeah.
And you actually have a policy on that. And to kind of put it into perspective, the ELE debt for the cost of the boiler for next year, the debt service on it is $116,700. And so you have the ability to put in anywhere from zero to 5% or the realized gains of the, of the fund. And what we've been doing recently is tapping into the realized gains of the fund. But that's because we tell the investor how much we need them to realize so that they have realized gains in order to hit it. So I would recommend that you consider reducing that tapping in of the ELE fund this year mainly because you have that unprecedented increase in the yield. And I don't know how long that will stay. I will also caution you that I don't count the CLAs and it's possible that they might surprise me. Either way, they might surprise me and really tank or they might surprise me and stay fairly the same. And that would change, you know, in January, how I recommend you think about that. But the amount of money that you're looking at is about, is about $116,700.
Which is about 1% of the board, 1% of the budget, correct?
So 1% of the budget is $227,000. I do think it's pretty close to 1 cent on the tax rate. Some of them can actually count.
But as far as this question is to whether or not we would put it on the ballot as a separate question? Do we have?
We're not, no, it's not a separate question because you already have been granted the authority to bond the, the project and you have already established an investment policy that allows you that flexibility. And that policy has been adopted in an open and transparent process through, through normal policy adoption.
Other questions?
Oh, I do want to tell you that between now, so 1 cent on the tax rate is $194,000. I just calculated that. Between the time I printed this off, which I think was around 1 o'clock this afternoon, and the 6:19 email that I got on equalized pupils, you gain six more. That's a double dash sword, right? So that's good because that's six more students in the denominator, but it's also six more students in the assessment. So when we cut the, you know, cut the assessment pie for Rattlin Northeast between Otter Valley and Barstow, you just earned a smidgen higher of that pie. And Barstow's changed by something like .23. So I, by no means can predict what that will look like. Our policy does state that it is the version as of December 31st that we use. So when I come back in January, I'll have what that number is.
Okay. Other questions for Brenda regarding this version of our budget?
Probably can't answer this, but do we have any ballpark figure from the state or anywhere else about what housing prices are doing relative to assessments?
Well, that's the CLA.
Yeah.
So she won't know, it was supposed to come out on the 15th?
No, well, I know she doesn't know what the CLA will be, but is there, is there any data out there that we can, you know, congregate over about what, what housing prices are?
Anybody a Realtor?
So at our, at our next meeting, she will have CLAs. So it will be part of this. We will know that information before we actually vote on a budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
So the only information I do have is the news that we keep hearing, right? So we've been hearing about how there is not as many houses for sale. You know, we all know that supply and demand of economics 101. And, you know, recently interest rates have started to climb. When interest rates start to climb, the housing market starts to settle a little. But since 2020, we, we know, we all saw it, right? That, you know, our neighbor's house sold for 50% over asking price as people moved out of cities and came to Vermont. And whether they're staying, whether they're removing, I don't know. Is, does it? Is Debbie there?
No, Debbie isn't there.
Oh, he might know because he has a closer pulse on what's going on in the town of Brandon, but other than the articles and new news, I have not.
Kind of an unfair question. When we get the CLA, that's really what I want.
It's usually Christmas week, so.
We should have a private meeting. Other questions?
Not so much a question, but maybe just a statement. I, I guess the thing that's coming to my mind is this is probably the last year before we have to make some really tough decisions, right? So, you know, if there's, if ever there was a year to maybe push a little more in for something else, this might be the year to do it.
Oh, you mean if we need something that we might not need next year?
Well, that we might want next year, but we may be able to get next year.
Okay. Well, so, but it would be a one-time push. So I guess that my question is, are we talking about equipment? We're not talking about people, I don't think.
No.
You'd be talking about.
I think that's next year's discussion.
Right, that's next year's discussion. So when you're talking about a push, I think here you talked about curriculum maybe?
It could be extra money for stuff in the classroom, right?
Right, okay.
Like we have, I don't know, rugs that need to be replaced or, you know, teachers, they may have to make some tough choices in the coming years.
Okay.
If they know that and have a year, that might be helpful.
So we can have some extra, okay. That, that's all I wanted to be able to understand what you were asking. Okay. Well, we can talk about that in our next meeting. So maybe Brenda and Kristen, if there are things on a wish list somewhere that could be brought forward if this is the year to potentially put a couple wish list things on, maybe. I don't know. I'm not sure that we want to do that either. I think it would be nice to our, our constituents to see a drop in the property tax rate. You know, a lot of them are feeling the pinch last year and to feel, you know, especially with interest rates rising and, and some people's mortgages going up because of interest rates that, that, you know, all of this is hard on everybody, so. But yeah, it's worth, worth looking at.
I think Debbie's writing this down right now.
Yeah, I didn't, right. Debbie, Debbie's already got a list, I'm sure. So, all right.
One thing I would like to ask you to consider doing, I'm not sure if it's on the agenda or if it's on the consent agenda, honestly, so I don't forget, because I have calculated it, gives to set an announced tuition rate for next year.
I would really like to do that next meeting because we did not put it on the agenda and it's not part of, we don't have a consent agenda on this. But if you would send an email to Melinda, she'll make sure it's on our next agenda.
All right.
Okay? All right, let's, while we're at it, why don't we do facilities discussion, our modular unit update while you're here?
Right. So that will be short because I haven't said anything on it. So it's been, it feels like I was just speaking with you. We had two, you know, big board meetings back to back and a lot of this information coming in. So I have not done a thorough dive. I've done a very superficial and, and surface dive. And in the surface dive, we have three hundred and twenty and three hundred and ninety that aside for modular units. So I'm not sure what other things are in other lines, so I would like to push that back to give you a better answer.
Okay.
In the meantime, in the meantime, we're just waiting, you know, Rattlin Northeast approved it after you and they did put the four seventy-five in. So we'll put it out to bid and before we.
It was four fifty. It was four fifty, okay.
You can't blame me for trying.
I know, I know. Well, you know, we're going to catch it. While we're talking about modular unit updates, is the one at OCA up and running yet?
It's not that it's going to be moved over Christmas break. So I know the US entry was there yesterday, there's electricity, there's heat, there's, you know, those, a little unsightly Jersey boulders to prevent any vehicular traffic coming close to where students would be walking and then there's the ramp. So yeah, we're expecting it to be open with the new year.
Nice.
And Nashabie will probably be February first. So it'll probably take another month before Nashabie's is open. But the trailer's on site, it has been connected and in place.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Any questions for Brenda or anyone else regarding modular units? Okay. So the only other thing that was left on our meet, our agenda, and we have about fifteen minutes, is the Listen Up performance. I'm hoping that you all got a chance to view it because we did send the link out prior to the meeting. Did everyone get a chance to watch it?
Thanks Debbie and Brenda.
That's a no. There's nothing going on this time of year, so I don't have a good excuse.
That's all right. Yes. So, okay. So do we want to watch a snippet of it? I don't know if we want to do that or if we just want to tailor it, table it for the meeting.
I hope we do a snippet.
Well, I, if we only have fifteen minutes, we wouldn't be able to talk about it anyway, so.
Can we table it? Do you need a motion?
No, I just need a consensus that it's okay to table it. It's all right? Okay, so we will table it. I'm not sure if it'll come back in January, it may have to come back a little bit later than that, depending on what's going on with our budget discussions. So regarding that, our next meeting is in January next year, Wednesday, January fourth, at six o'clock at Otter Valley. We will be having a board candidate info session. So for all of those people who are watching this, if you are thinking about becoming a board member and you see all these open seats available, come to a candidate info session and learn about what we do on the board. And that will be at Otter Valley on the eleventh. Prior to our special budget meeting for the OV board, which is probably where we're going to approve our budget for the year, which is also at Otter Valley on January eleventh. And then our next board meeting will be on January eighteenth because we all love to get together at Lothrup with Debbie, who graciously left, I guess. Anyway, and that will be at six o'clock. So if there is nothing else to discuss at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.